Good evening, everyone. The Board welcomes you to tonight's meeting being held in the Town Council Chambers. And the date is Tuesday. I'll get the date. Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. I want to remind you that this meeting is being recorded and please turn off all cell phones. Ellie, will you please do the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Forrest?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Moon?
Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Mrs. Vazell? Vice Chairperson, Mr. Morris?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granato?
Here.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Jack Redden?
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Ellie. I would like Sabrina Herrick to come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sabrina?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Sabrina. We have student and staff recognition tonight. Ms. Emmett?
We certainly do. We have three presentations this evening. If I could first start off with Emerson Williams School. If you could come up. They're going to be presenting "Look for the Good."
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Neela Takor and I am the incredibly proud principal of Emerson Williams Elementary School. I am here tonight with four of my fantastic staff members who I would like to introduce to you. I have Ms. Alyssa Root, who is a second grade teacher; Ms. Joanne Charbonneau, who is a fifth grade teacher; Mrs. Erica Richard, who is our art teacher; and Ms. Karissa Merzadzuski, who is our school social worker. Tonight, we are going to be talking to you about the Look for the Good Project, which was a two-week campaign that we ran at Emerson Williams Elementary School from March 20th through April 3rd. This was a really neat project in our school because it involved all 410 of our students, all 67 of our staff members, and many, many of the parents in our parent community. I would like to thank all of the Emerson Williams parents and students and teachers who are in the audience today, supporting our project. The five of us who you see up here tonight all received training in the Look for the Good program. And then after receiving the training, it was very clear to me that I needed to give my blessing and my heartfelt support to this program. And then basically, I just turned things over to these ladies and to Mrs. Nun, who is one of our fourth grade teachers, who basically coordinated this entire campaign for our entire school. I really didn't do much of anything other than give my blessing. These ladies who you see up here tonight, they worked with our three student council teacher advisors and our student council members in grades five and six. And what they did is they trained our student council members on the various components of the Look for the Good Project. And then they helped our students to basically run the whole campaign from start to finish. So this was really neat because it was a project run by our students for our students. So what is the Look for the Good Project? That's what we're going to be talking to you about tonight. And it's basically exactly what it sounds like. We spent two weeks as a school community, teaching our students how to reflect and slow down and look for the good in their lives. And we were teaching them also about how looking for the good in their lives has the potential to impact their lives in very significant and important ways. With their relationships, their academic performance, their behavior, absolutely everything, was the message we gave to our students. The Look for the Good Project is based around the core belief that gratitude has a huge positive impact on fostering the growth mindset, reducing violence and bullying, improving school climate and culture, improving academic achievement, and most importantly, improving overall happiness and quality of life. Now, I'd like to turn things over to these hardworking and dedicated staff members. They're going to explain to you the four major components of the Look for the Good Campaign.
The first component of the Look for the Good Campaign is called the gratitude spot. There were a few of these spots stickered onto the floors of high-traffic areas in our school. We also had a copy, a colored copy laminated for each of the classrooms that teachers decided where to put in their classroom. And students, faculty, parents, when they came to the school and they came across a gratitude spot, you would simply step onto the spot, pause for a moment, say out loud or think to yourself something that you are grateful for, and then move along with your
The Grateful Wall that you'll be seeing in tonight's video presentation along with the other components is an inspiring display at our school. Every day during the 10 days, every student, staff, teacher, shared their gratitude on a sticky note, and it was added to the display. Over the course of 10 school days, approximately 460 people posted a total of about 4,600 notes of gratitude. You'll be able to see it in the video. It is a very uplifting experience for all of us who participated. And it is a continuing source of positive energy for anyone who needs a little lift to keep them going throughout their day. Each time I walk down that hallway near the office, I spot someone taking a few minutes to read a few notes before they get along their way. It's truly an emotional work of art. If you can find your way to visit our wall, you'll find notes that say, "I'm grateful for my health." "I'm grateful for my life." "I'm grateful for food, toys, sports, or home." You'll read notes that say, "I'm grateful for the Rocky Hill Ferry." "I'm grateful for my parents." "I'm grateful for my religion and God." "I'm grateful for my teacher who's always looking out for me." "I'm grateful for water." "My brother Paulie who was nice to me." "My dog." "I'm grateful for stress balls." "I'm grateful for everything I have." "I'm grateful for lots and lots of sparkles." "I'm grateful for books." "I'm grateful for chicken, water, pencils, dancing, nature." "I'm grateful for our flag and our freedom." "I'm grateful for each breath in my lungs and each sunrise on the horizon." "I'm grateful for my bed, my cat, for art, and for crossing guards." Of all, I didn't read all 4,600.[525.82][525.82](laughter) I had to get back to work.[528.54][528.54](laughter) But it was truly hard to pick if I had to pick my favorite. I think my favorite was, "I'm grateful for the gratitude program."
The culminating act of the Look for the Good Program is to write a letter of gratitude to someone in your life who you appreciate. And the main idea is to read this letter out loud to the person who you wrote it to. And this act allows you and the person who's receiving the letter to appreciate all of the things that they've written and hear those words firsthand. So I want to just quickly read a letter that one of our now-sixth grade students wrote to her mom. She said, "Dear Mom, I am extremely grateful for you. I am extremely grateful for you because you are the best mom in the entire world. You take time out of your very busy day to help me with little things. You work so hard and are very helpful. No matter how annoying I am, you are still an amazing mom. You are funny, beautiful, smart, clever, and an awesome cook, and an awesome person. Some people take their moms for granted, but I don't. I love you to the moon and back one million times. I am very lucky to be your daughter. I love you so, so, so much." And on the last day of our campaign, we had an assembly for the entire school. And some of our students got up and read their letters to friends or family members, grandparents, who were able to attend the assembly. And the letters were very moving. A lot of us teared up. So it was a great, great impact.
Thank you. That's great.
So the last component I'm going to tell you guys about tonight is the You Matter Cards. We call them kindness cards. And what they say on the front is "You Matter." And on the back, it says, "Thank you for being an awesome human. The person giving you this card really appreciates something you did. Please pass this on when you see the good too." So essentially, these had been circulating throughout our school for the two weeks during the campaign. So whenever you saw somebody that you recognized as being kind or doing something above and beyond, you were able to hand one of these cards to them. And they initialed it and then passed it on to when they saw somebody doing something kind. And we still have a few of them circulating through because it was such an easy thing to do and so nice to see the reaction of students when they received one of these cards. So we can kind of get started on the video. Hopefully, it will play for you guys. We had staff members sending in videos and photos throughout the two weeks. And we put together this awesome 10-minute video for you guys to watch tonight, just of students and the assemblies and kindness cards and the gratitude wall. So we hope that you enjoy it.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
I might need your help, though.
The spots remind you to be grateful for everything in life. So if you see a spot, step on it and say what you're grateful for.
(singing) A room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth.
Every class will be getting a bag on the door to collect all the post-its. We will be collecting the bags every morning so we can add the post-its to the gratitude wall in the office.
(singing) Here come bad news, talking this and that. Well, give me all you got and don't hold it back. Well, I should probably warn ya, I'll be just fine.
I'm thankful for my family.
(laughter)
And thankful for my parents.[787.23][787.23](applause)
I'm thankful for all my friends.[793.01][793.01](applause)
And thankful for my teacher.[797.73][797.73](applause)
(singing) Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do. Hey, go! Uh! Bring me down, can't none bring me down. Your love is true, it bring me down.
What are you thankful for?
My family.
I'm thankful for everybody in the whole school.
(singing) Can't none bring me down. Your love is true, it bring me down. Can't none bring me down. I said, "Cause I'm happy."
(singing) Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth.
I'm grateful for my family.
I'm grateful for my Sharbonneau.
I'm grateful for my teacher.
(singing) Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth.
I am grateful for my parents.
I am grateful for the principal.
I am grateful for my parents.
I am grateful for my mom.
I'm thankful for everyone in the school.
(singing) Can't none bring me down. I said, "Because I'm happy."
(singing) Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth.
I'm thankful for my mommy and my mom.
I'm thankful for my friends.
I'm thankful for my teachers.
(singing) Feel like that's what you want to do.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you know what happiness is to you.
Because I'm happy.
Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do.
(singing) I see trees of green, red roses too.
I see them bloom for me and you. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world.
I see skies of blue and clouds of white.
The bright blessed day, the dark sacred night.
And I think to myself, what a wonderful world.
I'm thankful for a washer and a dryer.
I'm thankful for my teachers and my education.
I'm thankful for my family.
I'm thankful for my teachers.
(singing) I see friends shaking hands, saying, "How do you do?" They're really saying, "I love you." I hear babies cry. I watch them grow. They learn much more than I never knew. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world.
Yes, I think to myself, what a wonderful world.
(singing) I got this feeling inside my bones. It goes electric, wavy when I turn it on. All through my city, all through my home. We're flying up, no ceiling when we in our zone. I got that sunshine in my pocket, got that good soul in my feet. I feel that hot blood in my body when it drops. Ooh, I can't take my eyes off of it, moving so phenomenally. Boom, like the way we rock it, so don't stop. And under the lights, when everything-
Right now, let's take some time to be thankful for the food we eat. What sorts of food makes you grateful? Who prepares this food for you? Have you eaten it recently?
(singing) Nothing I can see but you when you dance, dance, dance. Feel a good good creeping up on you, so just dance, dance, dance. All those things I shouldn't do, but you dance, dance, dance. Ain't nobody leaving soon, so keep dancing. I can't stop the feeling. So just dance, dance, dance. I can't stop the feeling. So just dance, dance, dance. Ooh, it's something magical. It's in the air, it's in my blood, it's rushing on. I don't need no reason, don't be controlled. I fly so high, no ceiling when I'm in my zone. Cause I got that sunshine in my pocket, got that good soul in my feet. I feel that hot blood in my body when it drops. Ooh, I can't take my eyes off of it, moving so phenomenally. Boom, like the way we rock it, so don't stop. And under the lights, when everything goes. Nowhere to hide when I'm getting you close. When we move, well, you already know. So just imagine. Nothing I can see but you when you dance, dance, dance. Feel a good good creeping up on you, so just dance, dance, dance. All those things I shouldn't do, but you dance, dance, dance. Ain't nobody leaving soon, so keep dancing. I can't stop the feeling. So just dance, dance, dance. I can't stop the feeling. So just dance, dance, dance. I can't stop the feeling. So just dance, dance, dance. I can't stop the feeling. So keep dancing.
I'm thankful for the school.
I'm thankful for my teachers.
I'm thankful for my food.
I'm thankful for my teachers.
I can't stop the, I can't stop the, I can't stop the feeling. Nothing I can see but you when you dance, dance, dance. Feel a good good creeping up on you, so just dance, dance, dance. All those things I shouldn't do, but you dance, dance, dance. Ain't nobody leaving soon, so keep dancing. Everybody say. I got this feeling in my body. I can't stop the feeling. Oh, no, I can't stop the feeling. I see you in my body. I can't stop the feeling. Got this feeling in my body. Break it down. Got this feeling in my body. Can't stop the feeling. Got this feeling in my body.
Well, we far exceeded our 10-minute time limit. But we're certainly happy to take any questions that you may have. But thank you very much for letting us come and present about the Look for the Good Project this evening.
That was excellent. Neela, thank you very much. And Emerson Williams, thank you. And you know, we talk so much about climate and culture, and now we're hearing unfortunately so much about bullying. Well, if children start young to realize that each other, with each other, they have emotions and feelings, I think you're setting the groundwork for a much better environment. Thank you.
That was our hope. Thank you.
Thank you.[1352.13][1352.13](applause) Anyone else have a comment?
Yeah, if I could. I went to the assembly for that at the end of it. And I don't think I've ever seen that many kids that young in one place so totally under control in my life who are completely invested in this program. They look like they loved it. And I think that comes from the staff. That comes from the top on down. So I mean, my hat's off to you guys for pulling this off. It was awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Very well done. At this point in time, I would like to invite the Jets team to come forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ben Sikora, a teacher at Weathersfield High School. I'm very happy to introduce the Weathersfield High School Jets team, the design team at Weathersfield High School. This year, we had two teams that met after school that had to design an assistive technology device. We're very fortunate to have brought the device that the students have been working very tirelessly on since September. The team came up with two inventions this year. One of the inventions, which we brought today, the FLAG 2.0, won fifth place in the United States for the invention. There was over 125 different teams from around the United States that submitted assistive technology devices for people to use. We worked with CW Resources in New Burton, Connecticut. And there's an employee there named Nishima Hewitt, who is visually impaired. And the students' design was able to help her do a very complex job. And I want the students to tell you about all the awesome things that they did.[1473.01][1473.01](laughter)
All right. So we built this device last year, first of all. My name's Eric Bucknum. We built the device last year for the competition then. However, some clients of CW Resources weren't able to use it because the way it was operated was by a crank, and they had to be very accurate with it. And some weren't able to do so. So what we did this year was we implemented a motor onto the device where the user presses down a button, and then it feeds a row of labels onto it automatically. The task is to have labels be positioned onto envelopes in an accurate location. The labeled envelopes are used for the military to hold dog tags. And a lot of the times, some of the clients aren't able to position the labels correctly. So that's what we built the device for.
As Mr. Sikora mentioned, we work with CW Resources out of New Burton, Connecticut. And our client, Nishima, is legally blind. And so this task was very difficult for her to do before. And at any given point in CW's workday, six people are labeling these envelopes. So the FLAG 2.0 is, has increased their productivity immensely just by helping Nishima do this task when she wasn't really able to do it before.
One of the awesome opportunities that the students got to do while they're in DC was actually visited, a visit Senator Murphy, who graduated from Weathersfield High School. As a teacher and as a parent, I was so proud watching these students advocate for their invention on behalf of Chris Murphy and just kind of sharing with him all the work that went into building this project. Students had to create a presentation and share that in front of a group of judges who were engineers, also colleges and high school students. It was just amazing to see the process that they went through and the success that they've
So one thing that we learned while working with the actual design challenge in DC is we learned a lot about working with people with disabilities as a whole. And we learned about how different organizations are changing the way that works. So with working with Nishima, she's paid per piece that she's able to create. So by enabling her to work with this job, we enabled her to make more money per hour, per se, because they're not paid minimum wage, they're paid below that based on how many they can complete. And while we were learning that, we also were able to meet other people with disabilities at the challenge and learn more about their disabilities. So like, for example, the challenge was not just a competition and award ceremony. When we were there, we had a whole day of workshops where we were able to use goggles to see what it might be like to try and do a hands-on task while you were blind, or to have earbuds in with lots of distracting, like noises and movements that you might experience if you had a disorder like schizophrenia. So we learned a lot about the actual people with disabilities while doing this project and about people-first language, which is trying to put the person before their disability when you're speaking in regards to them. So we also had to do a lot of like different learning tasks about people with disabilities while we also had to incorporate the engineering into this.
There was a lot of students and mentors that helped make this a success. I'd like everybody to introduce themselves, tell us what grade you're in, and say hello. Go ahead. You haven't spoken already. Go ahead.
My name is Emile Maesterial. I am a senior and I'm one of the captains of the team.
I'm Michael Stefano, and I'm a junior here at Weathersfield High School.
I'm Jocelyn Wilcox. I am a senior and I'm also one of the captains.
My name's Eric Bucknum. I'm a junior and I'm one of the assistant captains.
My name's Lily Bello. I'm a senior and I'm also one of the captains.
I'm Arden Adamo. I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Chris Heverin. I'm a freshman.
I'm Lily Langdon. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm John Weismuller. I'm an alumni at Weathersfield High School. And I'm a professional engineer. I coach this in the evening along with my co-coach, Mr. Skora.
I thought you were going to say you're a freshman.[1756.23][1756.23](laughter) I was just going to say, things have changed.
Hi, I'm Dan Bucknum, and I'm one of the mentors of the team.
Hi, I'm Sue Finley. I'm a volunteer mentor with this program. And I just can't give it up because I love this program so much.
Thank you.
So as you can see, it's a big program. We use students from all different grades. We meet after school. Next year, the challenge would be how to go above and beyond the FLAG 2.0. I appreciate the support of the Board and letting us come and share tonight. So thank you.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.[1799.51][1799.51](applause) Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, how does it work? Do we get to see it work? I was going to make a motion to like make it go.
Well, it's not really working right now. We can show you sort of the photo.
The idea is you're supposed to take these envelopes, orange ones, you take out the stripe, push them in here in opposite directions, and slides into the tray. And then one in, one in. And then a piece of labels onto the envelopes. She references having this bar, pulls it out, and then she adds two labels on those.
It labels them perfectly almost every single time, and here you can see the electrical components that are used to rub it over.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other comments, John?
Now, from what I heard, this has been a two-year project? So you started it last year, and you redefined it again this year. All right, so how many man-hours?
Quite a few, yeah. Many Saturday mornings, many late nights. We've been working very arduously on this project. We're very proud of it.
You should be.
You should be very proud of what you've done. Thank you.
That's actually what set the kind of the team apart, is the fact that we took an idea from last year and then modified it for this year, and the judges were very impressed by them.
Very good. Anyone else? Can I ask you what you have there in your hand? I saw you up there with it. Is it a trophy?
This is our fifth-place trophy.
Oh, great.
It's a Weathersfield High School trophy.
Congratulations again. Great.
One more staff-student recognition this evening. Certainly a busy, busy evening and a nice one, to say the least. I am very proud to be before you this evening to announce four outstanding students as Cabe leaders. I will be filling in for Ms. Zapla this evening and announcing our two middle-school students. I'd first like to introduce to you Ms. Madison Riggi. Madison embodies so many leadership qualities. Her positive attitude and passion for learning is evident in the quality of work that she produces. Madison is a true role model for her peers. She is an excellent self-advocate who truly takes control of her own learning. She strives for success in all that she does while still recognizing that learning is a process. Madison is thoughtful and intelligent, offering insights to class discussions. Her eagerness to excel and optimistic attitude are contagious to those around her. Madison is not only an active member of the SDMS community, but she is also involved in the talent soccer program, dance, and plays the piano. Maddie's teachers are proud of her accomplishments, and we congratulate her on behalf of the Silas Dean Middle School faculty and student body. Madison, will you please come up? Mom and dad, you can come up too. Congratulations, Madison. Well done. Well done. Our next leader, Cabe student leader from Silas Dean Middle School, is Mr. Zachary Zerzola. Zachary is recognized as an SDMS leader and outstanding role model. Zach is a dedicated and hard-working young man. He sets the example for others through his thoughtful class contributions. He shares new ideas or approaches during class and small-group discussions, and helps lead others to higher levels of thinking and learning. Zach embodies respect as evident through his interactions with both teachers and classmates. His determination and perseverance to be the best person that he can be is evident, not only in the SDMS school community, but also on the athletic field. Zach's teachers are proud of his accomplishments and congratulate him on behalf of the Silas Dean Middle School faculty and student body. Zach, could you come up, please? Well done. And if I could please have Mr. Moore come up and join me at the podium for our Weathersfield High School student award winners.
I'd like to have Jack Breton, please join me, as well as Monique Gardon, right? Please. The two students that you see before you are seniors at Weathersfield High School. They are truly outstanding. Not only are they scholars, they are role models and actually leaders in our school community. And in the selection of both Monique and Jack in discussing with the administration, the faculty, and staff, we really looked at the leadership portion of the criteria for the award. As you know, Jack Breton represents the student body of Weathersfield High School each time here at the Board of Education meetings. Now, that's just a part of his work. It's the tip of the iceberg, right? Because he, on a regular basis, makes sure that he speaks to his classmates, his schoolmates, the staff, right, in order to represent them in a sincere and genuine manner. He does a great job with that. In addition, and I think a lot of you know, Jack is an unusually talented musician, right? He is outstanding, and he does everything with music at Weathersfield High School, especially in terms of our spring musical, the band, and so forth. So Jack truly is a leader in our school. Monique is very distinctive in her talents, and I wanted to speak a little bit because she is also a leader and a role model at our school. But she came to me with a little bit more of an unusual leadership request, and she worked, I wish Mrs. Moon was here, working with the Hunger Action Team. Monique designed an enterprise where high school students would go to each of the elementary schools and speak about the value of breakfast, right? And in designing this project, which has, you know, games and entertainment and information, right, she was able to lead her colleagues, organize them, bring them together, bring them to the elementary school. And I have to say, when I spoke with Principal Horder over at Charles Wright, he's not someone who gushes an awful lot. But when he spoke about the work that Monique and the rest of the students did with his students at Charles Wright, he gushed. He was thrilled to see the interaction, the way that the elementary school students responded to the high school students. I think it really was what you had envisioned, and I'm just so proud of both students well-deserving of these awards.
On behalf of the board, I want to congratulate Madison, Zachary, Jack, and Monique. Congratulations. So next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of the special Board of Ed meeting on March 28, 2017. Are there any corrections?
Move, that's written.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Ryan Kanaevic. I am in fourth grade, and I go to Emerson Williams. I thought the Look for the Good project made everyone more thankful. It also made me feel happy to go to school. My favorite part was the kindness cards. It was when we put nice messages on a sticky note. I want to see people continuing to be more thankful and kind to others. Thank you.
Thank you. That was excellent.
I can't follow that kid. This is going to be a downer. I am here to speak to express my concern over the class size for the current fifth grade at Webb Elementary School. The current fifth grade has always had two classes, but those two have been steadily increasing each year. Currently, the classes contain 25 and 26 students. Over the last few weeks, Webb has gained eight new students, while only three have left. This unpredictability in enrollment is very concerning for a grade of 51 students going into their sixth-grade year and their last before middle school. The issue was raised this past fall as well, but Webb took the wait-and-see approach, ultimately keeping two classes. And while the students and teachers have performed to the best of their abilities, we don't want our students to enter school in the fall only to be moved from their classes or have a sub while there's a search conducted for another teacher. Currently, there's a grade at Hanmer School with fewer students than the Webb fifth grade, and they have three classes compared to the two at Webb. I'm just asked that you take a look at the fifth grade at Webb, do what is necessary to ensure a similar environment. Test scores for the most recent S-Back show Webb is behind the district average in both the reading and math, and while there are many factors that cause this, surely having more students in the class is not helping to achieve better results. Overall, academic research shows students in smaller classes perform better in all subjects and on all assessments when compared to their peers in larger classes. Many parents I've spoken to speak positively about the fifth-grade teachers at Webb, but due to the overcrowded classes, they are concerned about the quality of education their children are receiving. Teachers are not able to spend the same amount of time with each student. If the student is struggling, they may not have enough time to help them. Alternately, if a student needs some extra attention or things to do and extra challenges, they can fall by the wayside. It's also important to note they're going into sixth grade in the fall and need to be prepared as possible to handle the changes in environment and academics that middle school will bring. I understand we are facing a tight budget year, but we're requesting that the Board of Ed address the issues that the class sizes are not overcrowded, and we can ensure each child's able to receive a quality education and a positive experience. If you could have a plan in place if they're faced with additional enrollments in the fall and large classes, so they won't have to be disrupted at the beginning of their sixth-grade year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have your name for the record, please? Eileen Washburn, 12 Acorn Way.
Thank you, Eileen.
Hi, my name is Shannon McNeese. I'm also, I'm at 467 Goff Road. I'm also a Webb fifth-grade parent, and I'm here to speak about the same thing of Eileen, and please forgive me if I repeat some of the information. I, a little bit of just background, I am a school library media specialist in another town in a school grade six to eight. So I work with sixth graders all year long. I'm very familiar with their educational, social, and emotional needs, and I've never come to the Board of Ed to complain in all my 14 years in Weathersfield, although if you know anything about the Webb history, there have been plenty of things we could have complained about. But this, we felt, was important enough to come and speak to the Board of Ed to perhaps make a change. I am concerned that the current and future class sizes of the Webb fifth-grade class are too large. My daughter often talks about how wonderful her teacher, Mrs. Fidiam, is. Despite the fact that there are 25 fifth graders whose learning she is responsible for, she is upbeat, encouraging, and organized. I honestly don't know how she does it day after day. The data alone that she collects to track student achievement is always impressive to me when I meet with her. But she is fighting an uphill battle. Differentiating to meet the needs of 25 students academically and socially is a challenge itself, not to mention that Webb is a Title I school with many English-language learners and many students who are brand-new to the Weathersfield school system, who haven't had the same scaffolding of education as our children. And have you seen Webb's S-Back scores? Even with all the incredible improvements to Webb, we are still struggling to succeed for many of our children, and I am concerned. Webb is mostly last on everything, and especially the fifth-grade class, when it comes to standardized testing at the state level. Over the past few weeks, Webb has had eight new students. This year alone, the fifth grade has had at least six that Emily could name to me, six new students, new to Weathersfield in fifth grade this year alone. There are many family-friendly houses for sale in the Webb district right now, right? Weathersfield is a great place to live. The housing is reasonable, the taxes are reasonable. I would not be surprised to have many more students move in now or over the summer. So I am concerned for next year. The sixth-grade year is crucial academically for students to make a successful transition to the academic demands of Silas Dean. I have a son who is a freshman in high school as well, so I've had the Silas Dean experience. I'm asking that you consider adding a third teacher for the Webb sixth grade next year in order to meet the needs of all of Webb's fifth graders. I've seen firsthand through my own teaching how reducing class size does increase student achievement. Lately, Emily, my daughter, has expressed on more than one occasion that she sometimes has difficulty concentrating because of student behavior or even the normal noise levels of a classroom with 25 children. They're fifth graders. They're boisterous. They're active. They're loud. She's starting to feel that her teacher is feeling frustrated that she cannot deliver a lesson the way she had hoped to, and Emily worries about the other students in the class not getting the education that they need. So I would like you to consider adding a third teacher ahead of time, not when we hit the 27 in October, so that our kids can have a smooth transition to sixth grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Fletcher, 26 Tollgate Road. Just to kind of work on what they had said, I think, you know, if you already have a school in a district with fewer kids in three classrooms, I think it's just kind of a no-brainer that we need to be prepared to add a classroom to Webb with its performance. And my daughter, we had a conference a couple weeks ago, and my daughter, her teacher mentioned that she was daydreaming a lot, and she's not getting, because there are so many kids in her classroom, she's not getting an appropriate education. There are just too many kids in this classroom, and it's really starting to cause problems. And I'm afraid that my daughter is not, is not doing as well as she could be because there are so many children in this classroom. And I think, I think being prepared and at least getting a plan on, you know, ready or even making moves, I think is a smart idea, rather than waiting until November, October, when it's tremendously disruptive to the students' data classroom. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for comment? Okay, Mr. Emmett, do you have any communications?
I do, a few this evening. Good evening again, everyone. For those of you not counting, there are 38 days left in the school year. Amazed when I counted it today. Please be reminded that the last day of school is Monday, June 19, 2017. It's a minimum school day. Graduation for the class of 2017 will take place on Friday, June 16, at Cove Park. With regard to your calendars, we've got a lot of events coming up here in May and June. It is amazing. So for example, in May alone, we've got the WSPC Volunteer Awards, the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, the UConn Parent Engagement Program Celebration, National Honor Society induction ceremonies. And then into June, we're looking at the Mayor's Charity Ball, the Weathersfield Transition Academy graduation, step-up ceremonies at all five elementary schools, the middle school, dare graduations for fifth graders at Webb, Charles Wright, and High Crest. So a lot coming up over the next couple of months. Also want to let you know, the Array survey was administered back in October to students in grade seven through 12 here in Weathersfield. That survey has yielded results, and a presentation of those results will be provided to you at the May 23 Board of Education meeting. I'll be up there along with Bonnie Smith, who helped to coordinate the Array survey. Bonnie's a parent of Weathersfield students and a resident here in Weathersfield, as well as I see Kathy Bagley out in the audience. Kathy and Erica will also be presenting. And the real focus of this data is to And the real focus of this data is to give us some good, solid baseline data in terms of what type of services we need to provide for our students and our families. And this really ties into the opioid forum that occurred on April 10 over at the high school, where we had multiple stakeholders present to talk about the issue of opioid abuse and what we can do to support our families here in Weathersfield. So, really, we'll be excited to share this data with you coming up on the 23rd. Also this evening on the agenda, I certainly want to speak to this piece. We have our process of non-renewal notices that is before you. I say this every year, it's not something I like to do, but obviously with the budget situation being as it is, we need to take the necessary steps to ensure that the district is held harmless in the event we need to reduce staff. My hope here is that we're able to come forward with a budget. And again, I think this year, more so than ever before, it is really, really uncertain. Typically, we look at that charter date of May 15 as the point at which we get our appropriation. We will be meeting with the Town Council Finance Committee tomorrow evening to have a discussion on kind of where things are at. Just to refresh everyone's memory, we are at a proposed 2.94% increase for next fiscal year, and that maintains all of the current programs and staff. Again, it's not a real robust budget, but it maintains what we have, which we're certainly looking to maintain. My hope is that once we get the appropriation from Town Council, the board will come together as soon as possible to rescind non-renewal notices and make sure that staff are whole. I did have a conversation today with the union president. Obviously, this is a communication that we have each year. Teachers are aware of this process. And again, the process this evening has nothing to do with performance of staff, but is merely a budgetary process. And then, if I could, I appreciate the folks coming out from Webb this evening. That certainly is on our agenda. We've seen the numbers go up over the course of the year, so I know that the one that hit 26 happened, I think it was like last month. So, what we'll do is take a look at all of our elementary schools over the course of the year. We may have classes where we can in fact collapse. And again, you understand this board is very clear and adamant about maintaining low class sizes. So I appreciate your input, and we're keeping an eye on it, okay? And that's it for communications this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Emmett. Continuing, next on the agenda are the action items, and John Morris will read Action Item 6A, which is quite long. Go ahead, John.
Take a deep breath. Move that the Contract of Employment of ID Numbers, 906-194, 905-564, 906-126, 906-179, 906-180, 906-182, 906-183, 906-184, 906-185, 906-186, 906-188, 906-196, 906-156, 906-016, 906-124, 906-032, 906-083, 906-084, 906-086, 906-090, 906-093, 906-094, 906-097, 906-100, 906-104, 906-058, 906-045, 905-960, 905-863, 905-985, 906-001, 906-002, 906-007, 906-015, 906-022, 906-025, 906-110, 906-009, 905-675, 906-169, 906-171, 906-175, 906-187, 906-190, 906-192, 906-193, 906-199, 906-201, 905-979, 906-146, 905-967, 905-965, 906-085, 906-087, 906-098, 906-099, 905-660, 905-893, 905-894, 905-907, 905-912, 905-914, 905-915, 905-917, 905-926, 905-927, 906-335. Non-tenured teachers not be renewed for the following school year upon expiration at the end of the 2016, 2017 school year, and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Matthew, would you read Item 6B for us?
Move the Weathersfield Board of Education approved superintendent to submit a grant under the RFP for program enhancement projects for adult education for the time period of July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? And we do have Robbins here tonight to help, Kim Robbins here tonight to help us, and Sally. And we have our park and rec person here, and we will ask questions if anybody has any questions to ask on the grant. No? I want to just compliment, then, it is, would you explain it to us even some more, as you know, and it comes out of WEC. That's where it originates.
So, as we know, our English language learner population is increasing in Weathersfield, and this is a grant for a family literacy program. It's $50,000 from the State Department of Education. There's no cost to the Weathersfield Public Schools, and what it does is it gets our kids ready and engages our parents early. So, the most exciting piece is that it has a workforce readiness piece, right? So we all know that Connecticut needs taxpayers. And this actually combines English language learning with workforce development. So, there's a new program called Burlington English, which is available online, where John, for example, if he spoke Chinese and he wanted to be a nurse, he could go online, and it would customize to John's English level, and then it would expose him to career pathway language, so he could become a nurse. So it increases the financial stability of the families, it's good for our taxpayers, but it also teaches parents early literacy and family literacy. So they have circle time, where they sit together, and they learn how to read to their children. Read to Grow will provide free books for the families, so they get to take books home, and it's just a great partnership. The partnership with Social Services involves recruiting our neediest families. So as families come in to use the food pantry, if they speak a foreign language, we can recruit them for this program. And then the data follows them to see, did it actually make a difference? So, did it increase the financial stability of the family? But the amazing thing is that it's such a partnership between Weathersfield Public Schools, Social and Youth Services, Capital Workforce Board, American Job Centers, the Tri-Town YMCA, which will provide early care and education for the children, and there's also Rebecca Lemansky, who is a Triple P parent educator, who's a High Crest parent, who will provide parent training and education for the parents. So, we'd like your approval to apply.
Okay, any questions? John?
How are you? I think this is great. This is the first time a grant of this kind has gotten for Weathersfield, is that correct?
Yes, this is the first time. So Vernon's been doing it for nine years, but this is the first time that we had a position, the Early Childhood Coordinator position, that was here to advocate for young children and families and write the grant.
So the likelihood for July 1, 2018, for us to apply again, is that a good, are we in a good position to be able to do it again for another year?
Yes. So Vernon has received it for nine years, so we're hoping that, we're just duplicating their work, we're building on their success.
That's really good.
Yeah, thanks.
We get to learn Chinese.
And nursing.
Where do the matching funds come from that are listed in the material?
Right, so it's a 25%, you have to show matching funds, and it's in-kind support. So Sally Distoli's time and Kazaka's time. Yep, as the fiscal agent. So Weathersfield will provide in-kind support, and that's where the matching financial funds will come from.
Excellent.
Anyone else? Diane?
This is very important and a step in the right direction. We talked about this at great length, and I'll report later when we had our Students' Program and Services, the ESL teachers come speak to us about the growing demand in Weathersfield for English as a second language learners. And we even talked about, you know, bringing, incorporating the family and starting at an early age, so I think this will go a long way to supporting that program, which is pretty low in resources right now.
And Kim has all the data on how many foreign-born mothers are in town here and how we need this. But this is for people who are working and who need...
Yes, so what we're finding is that we have a highly educated but underemployed immigrant population. So, for example, if families coming into Social Services, I've seen a Bosnian psychologist, an Albanian social worker, Peruvian engineers, who are working, washing dishes and taking out garbage for companies. They're hard-working families, but they just need that English piece, and this will provide it to them.
Anyone else? Okay, so all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Motion 6B passes. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, let me introduce this. So this evening, we have a special education presentation, and I believe this is the presentation that the Student Program and Services had last month. And I had mentioned then that the whole board and the town for that fact should have the opportunity to see and learn from this overview of our special ed program in town. John, are you coming up? Thank you.
John Kazar, Director of Special Services, and Melissa Cook, Supervisor of Special Education Services.
This is the meeting that never ended.
I was about to comment on that. Well, we're setting up, first of all, thank you for having us here tonight. And actually, I'll have to say, our student presentations were unbelievable, so I first need some resumes from the Jet Club, because that was amazing. And I guess a little bit because being grateful, I really am grateful to be here in Weathersfield and grateful to be here tonight to present this. And so we did present a little less than a month ago to student programs, and with that, it did, it went over two and a half hours. We did have a full team, which I think actually added to a lot of discussion and really learning a lot of our dedicated and hard-working staff, and really the continuum of services they provide. And so with that, I just want to, you know, special thanks to Kevin, Elaine, Bobby, Diane, and Janet, who's not here. Actually, wrong seat, so I won't say you're Janet, so, because, I mean, really, I know the time that you put in, but the time that you put in that night for us, it went over two and a half hours, so I really do thank you about that. And so, I will start off just, and I shortened down a lot of this, and so even my beliefs I shortened down, because I really want to focus on three main ones, and also to talk a little about the PPT process and the IEP product, and finally, to look at some stats and then talk about some of the roles that our different certified staff play within the department. And I will say, especially, it could be very complicated. And so with it, there's IEPs and PPTs and FAP and 504s and IDEA mandates, legal updates. And I say this at PPTs, but I'm also going to say this tonight, because sometimes we get so used to talking our lingo, we forget that not everyone knows that lingo. And so I say this at PPTs to parents, and it really makes me remember, I have some friends that are in the military, and when I go out with them, it's, what are you talking about? Everything is a code and an acronym, and so if we say any of those initials and you really want some clarification, please ask, because we're too used to it, and so we do that a lot. And so a little, what is on my bumper? Okay, and I had a colleague of mine that used to talk about, the people you work with should have an idea of what your beliefs are, and that should be developed into the culture. And so, what is on my bumper? And so a couple of things I'll talk about is the, first of all, is the first one, and so compassion matters. And so with this, there's a growing body of research that shows that compassion is both fundamental and beneficial to human survival. And more importantly, research is showing that the slowing of neurons that really occur with trauma can actually be reversed and quickened up through compassion. And so, very important that everything we should do should be with compassion. And so I'm going to give an example of this. There's a TED Talks by Rita Pearson, and if you haven't seen it, you do have to see it, amazing educator, or she was an amazing educator. And she talks about compassion, and really about, every child deserves a champion, and adults who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insist that become the best they can possibly be. And she tells a story about, she gave a test one day that had 20 questions on it, and one of the students got 18 wrong. And so she put plus-two and a smiley face. And the student went up to her and said, Ms. Pearson, didn't I fail? And she said, yes, you did, but you got it too. What a great way to start. We're going to review it, next time you're going to get more. And I just use that because that compassionate answer, what a difference, because the F sucks all the life out of the child. That plus-two and you're going to do better gives them energy, gives them hope, and they can move forward. And so we really have to use compassion. So the next thing is every child, every day. And I do have to say, this doesn't mean some children someday. This doesn't mean, and I hate when people say this, our children and not your children. This doesn't mean every children except that one day that I'm having a bad day. And I used to, when I was principal, I used to always ask my students, so last night, did I have a good day or a bad, or a good night or a bad night? So did I go home, and my wife had dinner for me, and my kids gave me big hugs and kisses, and my dog, you know, brought me my slippers? Or was it one of those bad days where I got in a fight with my wife, my kids ignored me, that actually might have been last night, and my dog, I had to pick up, you know, accident on the carpet? And so I'll just ask the team here, did I have a good night or bad night last night?
Yeah, bad.
I... Actually, it was a late night, but, you know, really, it doesn't matter.
Tell me about the night before, right?
Monday night, yeah. Yeah. But it doesn't matter. We have to present our best every day, because our children deserve that. They deserve the champion that are behind them every single day. And so the next one is create the miracle. We really are blessed, because we have the opportunity, and even more so than just teaching, we have the opportunity to create miracles. And so I'll bring up a couple. Well, can a blind man see? Can a man confined in a wheelchair, is he handicapped? Okay? And so the first one, can a blind man see? I'm going to use a, actually, this is on YouTube, he's called the Batman, okay? Daniel Kirschman? Wow, I'm going to say that wrong now. Daniel Kish, sorry about that. Daniel Kish. He's blind, okay? He actually rides a bike down the street. He'll go through, walks through the forest. He uses echolocation, so like the bats, to do all that. And they actually say that he can do those things better than most people, okay? The second story I'll do is, can a man who's in a wheelchair, is he handicapped? And so this story is about Coach Bob Beltrandi, okay? Bobby actually grew up with me, played football with him, had a bad accident when he was in college. He now coaches football at St. Paul's over in Bristol. Bobby got interviewed by a newspaper a few years ago, and the newspaper reporter asked him, so tell me about your handicap. And Bobby said, I'm not handicapped, I have my faith. People who do not have faith are handicapped. I have my faith, I may be confined to a wheelchair, but I can do anything. And I think just his, you know, the what he's proved on the football field is amazing. So those are three of the beliefs that I want to make sure that all our staff follow, that they all make sure that they, you know, it's part of their life, because we have to believe that. We have to believe that compassion matters, we have to believe that it's every child every day, and we have to believe that we do create miracles when we help that child grow, when we help that child learn how to, you know, strategize, you know, on their disability. And so the next thing I'll talk about is the PPT process and the IEP product. And so first of all, PPT process, that is our meeting, okay? Many states actually call it the IEP meeting. I think in Connecticut, it's special that we call it PPT, because it really focuses on what is special. It is the team, the planning and placement team that develops the program that is special. And the team is general ed teachers, special ed teachers, support services, parents... And the team is general ed teachers, special ed teachers, support services, parents, administrators, that come together to create the document, the IEP. The IEP is a very rich and confusing document. It could be, at the minimum, 11 pages and very easily over 20 pages. When we start acting, you know, adding goals and objectives, it could be way over 20. And so with that, and we actually can hand some of these out, this is something that the state puts out, that really describes, because what I've heard is the IEP actually has over 500 process points within the IEP. And so that really has to be carefully, intentionally planned to create a program for the child, and I'll use these words a lot, that demonstrate educational benefit. Because we really have to prove that our IEP is beneficial to the child. And that goes through, and I'll start the process, because it starts off with present level of performance. What is the child strong at? What are they weak at? What is their disability? And how that disability impacts their ability to access their education. So from there, then we move into goals and objectives. What are goals and objectives that address the weak areas in the present level of performance? Then we go to accommodations modifications. What does the child need to help them in the class? And that could be accommodations, which are, you know, ways that we present the work, or modifications actually changing the work because of their disability. And finally, what services are we going to provide? Both special ed services and support services. And so there really is a fluid motion between each of those to develop an IEP.
And when we develop this IEP, you know, in talking with staff, it would take, most of our staff members, anywhere between an hour and a half to two hours, just to draft the IEP to prepare for an annual review, which is the one-year meeting where we look at students' performance over the course of the year and develop a plan moving forward. And it's, it really represents how we're ensuring that our students with disabilities are accessing what we call FAE, that Free and Appropriate Public Education.
And so the next chart shows some of the increases over the past six years in special education. And so there has been a 34% increase in special ed students over the last six years. Okay? So that's pretty significant. And at the same time, there's been a 6% decrease in enrollment. And so 34% is pretty big. Next, I just want to talk about magnet schools. And so magnet schools, even though the services are provided at the school, we still are the owner of the IEP. And so Melissa and I cover all the magnet school PPTs. And so within that, it's not just going to PPTs, but it is following up with case management, following up with conversations with the parents, conversations with the team, because even though we don't have administrative supervision over their staff, we have to make sure that they are following the IEP appropriately.
Additionally, and if you look at the numbers, I'm not sure if you had mentioned that it's been a 48% increase in students in living in Weathersfield, attending magnet schools that receive special education services that we oversee. In addition to that, not only John and I going out to the magnet schools, we are now utilizing our school psychologists, our speech and language pathologists, our occupational therapists to conduct evaluations of these students in magnet schools.
So I will say, budgets are tight all over the place, not only in Weathersfield, but magnet schools. And so we are getting more and more charges for those testing. And so with it, we are looking at, well, if we have them test, it's going to be a price. And so as much as possible, we try to have our staff go out there and test. And so the next slide is out placements. And so just a quick discussion on least restrictive environment. So as much as possible, we want to educate a child in the least restrictive environment. So that is really the general ed setting, as much as possible. But as their needs grow, we have to really make it more restrictive. So that could mean moving from the general ed setting, you know, maybe with push-in services, to pull-out services more in our resource room, or providing support services where they're pulled out of class. From there, we can go into specialized programs, you know, within the district. And so that would include our ADA program, our ADP program, NALS program over at the high school, and Weathersfield Transition Academies. Those are some of the, you know, more self-contained programs we have in the district. After that, we have to look at, you know, outside of the district. And I know, especially with the budget, that really makes it tough. And I'm sure all of you, you know, when talking about the special ed budget, it's, well, where's that coming from? And so we have to do what's appropriate for every child. And so I'm not going to say it's not the best. Years ago, there was a famous case where the judge says, you don't, the judge said, you don't have to provide the Cadillac, you have to provide the Chevy. So we have to make sure it's appropriate for each child. And at times, their needs are such that they do require the outplacement. And just with this graph, it shows that it really, it's up and down. You know, in any year or any day, we can have a PPT where all of a sudden something's happening that could require more. One thing that we are going to be doing is doing more of a close audit of our, you know, students that are outplaced, just looking at, you know, why are they outplaced? How are we trying to bring them back? And is there any possible way that we can provide some of those services or programs within district?
And I would say, you know, our school buildings take ownership for our students that are outplaced and look to support when we bring students back. I could speak to a school right now where we're doing a blended program and has had a successful first couple of weeks in the blended program. But it takes a lot of effort on our homeschool staff to work in communication with our outplacement staff to make that successful transition back. This graph looks at just our, understanding our numbers a little bit better. And this is a three and a half year trend of students who moved into the district, who already had an existing IEP, or through our internal referral process, have been identified with needing special education services. And as you could see, overall, we're seeing an upward trend in both those students that are moving in with IEPs, as well as students that are referred. And if you look at the arrow going up, that was as of March 10th, we were at approximately 30 newly identified, but we had 30 referrals still pending as of March 10th. Just to make you aware, since the last time we've met, I could add 17 to that number as well.
Yeah.
So we have an additional 17 referrals in the last six weeks, with what, a week of April break in there as well. So those are numbers that are still pending, that we'll find out what happens between now and June.
And I will say, that could come from a variety of sources. That could come from our SRBI process, but it can also come from requests from parents. And the parents may have some requests that, you know, they want to test their child. And so with that, under our childified obligations, we at least need to go to that PPT one to discuss, and then determine if, you know, the team determines is testing necessary or not. And I'll bring this up, because right now, one thing, it's the burden of proof. And the burden of proof is really that it's up to us, the burden, to prove that either the child, you know, that the IEP is not appropriate, sorry, that the IEP is appropriate, or the child needs testing, the burden is on us. And so that can come into a lot of, and I'll say, lengthy legal fees or lengthy processes, whether it's mediation or due process, that we're really trying to avoid.
One other thing I just want to highlight with this graph is, it really shows how special education is a moving target, and the number of students that we service is a moving target. So when we talk about class sizes, which also came up tonight, you may have an increase or may not, as a general education teacher, in your class size. With special education, I could almost guarantee your caseload and the number of students that you service is going to change from the first day of school to the last day of school.
Can I just ask a question on that? You have, what's it like, 47 referrals? You have a timeline that you have to follow.
Yes, there is.
You're going to get that done before the end of the year?
We have to.
We have to.
You have to, don't you?
The timelines that you're talking about, there are two. There's a federal timeline and the state timeline. The state timeline looks at 45 school days. So from the day that we receive a referral, so if a parent emailed a counselor tonight and said, I'm concerned about my child, they don't have to use the right lingo, that actually starts the clock, and that is considered a referral. We have to determine eligibility by 30 school days and implement the IEP by day 45.
Thank you.
The other way would be 60 calendar days, is the federal.
And so we'll talk about a few of the specific roles with special ed teachers and school psychologists, but that's all that, every day is a little bit different, and it adds to their duty. So they may have, you know, something set for tomorrow, but all of a sudden, they have referrals that have to be done, timelines have to be met.
This chart just looks more specifically at students moving into the district and the trend. And off to the side, you could see that in green, those are our students that we either had to outplace initially, just because of the extensive program that they require, or as they came into district, we had to move to an outplacement within the year. So on average, for each additional outplacement, it could add to the budget, on average, $100,000.
In the range, $50,000, and really, it can go up to $200,000. And so with that, they come in from a, you know, another district with an outplacement, we have to follow that IEP.
The red looks at students that moved into district, but were attending, or were attending a magnet school, might have been living in another town, and now moved to Weathersfield and had an IEP. So say they were living in Ruckey Hill or in Hartford, and now they're living in Weathersfield, we inherit that IEP, which also impacts the number of students that John and I are overseeing, because we oversee all magnet school students, as well as it impacts increased responsibility, as I said before, in our staff regarding evaluations. And as of March 10th, there were 16 staff that attended one or more PPTs for magnet schools or Corpus Christi in town, and conducted 32 evaluations. So this chart looks more specifically at our special education teachers. There's, the blue looks at the number of students that they service with an IEP, and the red looks at their service hours. So for example, if you look at middle school SDMS, the average special ed teacher, case oversees, on average, 27 students, and the total service hours for those 27 students on average is one and a half. You kind of have to look at this from like an elementary's perspective, a middle school perspective, and a high school perspective. At the elementary, what we have to take into account, we have two special ed teachers in each of our elementary schools, they're servicing grades K through six. So that's a lot of grades for two elementary school students.
Have a lot of classes to cover, so it's not only the case management, but it's also covering those classes. In middle school, the number is a little bit higher for case management, but with that, they only have the two grades to follow.
With a lot of changes in legislation, for example, dyslexia is now its own category on an IEP. Some of the just common trends we're seeing are requests for specialized training from our, of our teachers in the area of dyslexia. So even though we're meeting that, the state criteria to educate and provide IEPs, we're getting more and more requests as to, so what specific training do you have in, say, dyslexia or in autism? So they're looking for those specialties and for us to demonstrate that. There are also trends are looking at that specialized instruction in a very small one-to-one or one-to-two, one-to-three group ratio. So when you're looking at, you know, servicing 21 students over seven grades, it becomes very tricky, and the principals work really hard with the staff to figure out how we group students and service them.
And so with that right now, especially around dyslexia, there's a lot of, and I'll say, information out there about specific programs. And usually, within the PPT, we're not talking about specific programs, we're talking about child needs, but there's really some very intense and intensive, small numbers of students at a time where they teach or teaching some of these specific programs. And so it's one of the hard things to combat when our case management numbers are high.
When we look at the middle school, there's three teachers, compared to the elementary school where there's two, but they're serving eight teams, and the numbers are higher at the middle school. And the middle school, I would say, is seeing very similar trends to the elementary school regarding requests pertaining to dyslexia, structured literacy, and offering those continuum of services. And at the high school, we have five teachers, but however, what you do not see in this graph is our teachers are also providing services to 504 students and meeting their needs as well.
And I'll just add to that, it's five resource teachers, because we have four teachers with specific programs, the ALS and ADP program.
What sort of, what sort of issues are these kids presenting with?
A wide variety.
A little bit of everything. So there is 17?
We'll get to a graph a little bit later. It shows all the disability categories and the percentages within our district in which we're servicing. But as far as a special education teacher, you are responsible for servicing students with a wide range of disabilities and needs. So you could be servicing children with learning disabilities, you could also be servicing children with what we call the OHI, ADHD, you could be servicing children on the autism spectrum, so, and each one of those would present with different needs. So it's very individualized per the IEP.
You bring up a great question with that, too, because I think, as you can figure out, trying to do some of that at the same time, because it'd be impossible to try to schedule it, so it's all one, you know, different characteristic or disability at a time. And so there are times, even within the same room, you have different disabilities, different ability levels, everything else at the same time. So it is very complicated.
The next graph looks at speech and language pathologists within our district. They are the only other certified staff member that can be seen as the primary special education service provider, other than a special education teacher. So for a student to receive special education student services, there has to be a special education services. You could also be primary just speech and language, so those are students typically with a communication disorder. So our speech and language pathologists also case manage quite a number of students within our district, and these are the numbers that speak to who they serve. So on average, they're servicing, at the elementary level, 35 students on their caseload, and at the secondary level, 34.
And so during our first presentation, we had representatives from the different disciplines of our department, and I thought that was very powerful, because you really had a discussion with them about their jobs. Just because of time constraints, everything else, we do not have them. So we actually, first of all, I want to say, I am so proud, because my department is so hardworking and dedicated. They really are. I mean, they are amazing. And you just heard some representatives that night, but they're all like that. They really, it's about the child, and they're really working hard to make sure each child has an appropriate program. And so right now, actually, we just want to talk about maybe two, just to give you an idea of some of their scopes of their jobs, and some ways of how it's changed over the past, and I'll use like 10 years.
So when we think of special education teachers, and we think of the continuum of service and the diversity of needs, which you were asking about before, you could really look at their roles and expectations as instructional, as a teacher providing specialized instruction, and as a case manager. So to provide a continuum of services, we expect our special education teachers to, we're providing instruction in what we call a resource room. So it's a small group instruction outside of the general education classroom to target their specific areas of needs and their goals and objectives. But we also may need to service students in the classroom, either through a co-taught model, which we are doing at the middle school and at the high school for certain classes, or at the elementary level through a push-in services. We also may have students, though, that need more support than that and are taking a specialized reading or math class, and this is typically at the middle or high school level, in lieu of their general education class. Students are, our special ed teachers are also responsible for ensuring that they're modifying, if the child needs modified assessments or classwork or projects. Some students may need alternative texts. We expect our special education teachers to be worked with the general ed teachers to locate and provide those alternative texts, as well as to assess, support with grading. So they consult with report card grades, and they also write progress report for IEP goals and objectives. So for each goal and objective in the IEP, we expect data comments for there to be in the progress report. So on a report card, if you notice, there's usually a one and two, and a little bit of narrative. For every single objective that we are servicing through the IEP, data is provided to the parents. And that happens at every report card time and at the annual review. I just wanted to highlight, I pulled a middle school special education teacher, just to kind of highlight what she does, and I would say, her picture probably represents similar to elementary and similar to high school. So one teacher right now currently services 31 students. She has a total of 84 mandated service hours. She case manages 29 of those 31 students, and she provides structured literacy to 21% of her students. And she provides modified or alternative curriculum to 30%, 30%, 30% of those students. She's had 59 PPTs by the end of this school year, has done 18 evaluations. She's had fifty-nine PPTs by the end of this school year, has done eighteen evaluations. Most of the evaluations that our staff do range in doing the evaluation with the student, anywhere between two and three hours, depending on how much, um, how many different types of tests are required. And then it takes approximately two to three hours for them to develop the report to present that PPTs.
And so I'll talk a little about school psychologists, just to bring up one, and, um, especially because I started off as a school psychologist. And back when I started off, it really was about testing. It was the testing the mandated students, um, you know, for an evaluation. And that has changed so much. Back then, we went by what was called the discrepancy program. Basically, it was the ability, and then you looked at areas of weakness. And if there was a significant amount of, you know, variation between the two, they would qualify. We've, uh, two thousand and eight, that was changed to, uh, this RBI process. And so with that, what we have to show is, first of all, that the child is receiving an appropriate curriculum and that through interventions, and what we use as tier-two and tier-three interventions, that they're not making the progress that they should, that then could qualify them for, you know, special ed. And so within that, and I'll use psychologists, but it's really across the roles, that it's, first of all, uh, you know, school psychologists, social workers are providing the tier-one instruction around social emotional learning. They're in the classrooms, providing those lessons, providing the curriculum. They're working with the team as, you know, a lot of times the school climate, um, expert, um, or, you know, chairing the school climate team to address, you know, all school-wide, um, interventions. Um, then they're working with students that are labeled, you know, in that they need tier-two interventions, and they're providing a lot of those interventions within the classroom, or sometimes even with some pull-out, um, counseling and, um, you know, different, um, other interventions. And then finally, the tier-three interventions. And so that role has really changed. And on top of that, they're dealing with the, um, daily crises. Um, crisis intervention, risk man- you know, risk, um, assessments. And every day can be different. And so they really go into the field with that, with really rotating schedules, because through all this, they have to meet the mandated services. They have to meet the timelines. They have to make sure that children they're counseling are being counseled. Um, but they also have to be very flexible, because if all of a sudden a crisis occurs, they're the, uh, you know, person that's being, uh, called on to respond to it.
So that was a very abbreviated version of the almost three-hour meeting that we had the other night. And I have to say, it's really hard, because I, I, kudos to, I think, the teachers and the related service staff that were with us, speaking to their pers- to their profession and to the students they've worked with. They were very passionate. Um, and you don't have them here tonight. You're kind of just stuck with John and I, so I apologize for that. But, um, uh, any questions that we can answer? This chart on the last page looked at your question regarding just the different disability categories. It's kinda small. We could send it a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I couldn't, even though my computer.
Yeah, I was like, it's really small. It was bigger than the last one. We tried to condense down for the sake of time, but I can send that to you, so you can kinda just see the percentages or the prevalence.
What's the large green block or olive block?
Uh, speech and language. So typically, our, uh, learning disabilities and I would think speech and language is down on the bottom right.
And actually, within Weathersfield, we have seen some changes that speech and language has actually been decreasing and learning disability has been increasing. And it has been really matching more of what is at the state. Um, and a couple of reasons, uh, behind this. I mean, we think of that, you know, specifically with the, uh, new dyslexia label, that's really, uh, showing a lot of different things. Um, also with interventions, that there could be interventions that are done, more speech and language, tier-two, tier-three interventions, to sort of prevent it going from that level. But we have seen a decrease with speech and language and an increase with the, uh, learning disabled. And also an increase with, uh, other health impaired, which, uh, really is the, like, attention deficit and, uh, other, um, disabilities within that.
So those are all kids who function in a classroom with some level of assistance, uh, differing types?
Um, yes, it could be. And using that least restricted environment, we try to have them in a classroom, but there could be times where the disability is so great, that we do have to, you know, more do resource, you know, programs, or at the extreme, the, um, outplacement.
So we have five hundred and thirty-four kids who qualify under this program?
Um, actually, more right now. Um, 'cause I know we've qualified a few more even since that time. Five thirty-one?
So we were at five thirty-one. This was as of probably March tenth. We probably had nine new identified with.
Does it include kids who are placed out of district in various facilities or no?
This is just in-house, I believe. And then...
We have another population that's outside of the district.
And then you also have your, your magnet school ones that you're looking at that we oversee.
I'm trying to think of that, because I got these data.
But I'll have to double check. I believe that was in district.
Is it magnets or kids who were in facilities, um, for physical or mental?
No, that would be our outplacement students. So we have, this is, they, these are all separate, John.
This comes from the state. That is the, um, it shows, actually, this is not our pre-K population. It's kindergarten through, um, our twelfth grade.
So we have fifty-one who are outplaced?
Correct.
Correct.
And that does not include magnet schools?
Nope. Magnet schools, we are at approximately thirty-seven.
And then we have five hundred and thirty-one in district.
Approximately, yes. It's a moving target, but I would say approximately.
Sure do.
Yeah.
Wow.
How is it and who makes the decision about what the appropriate part is of this whole thing?
That's the, of the IEP. PPT.
So, um, as supervisor director, that's not our decision alone. That has to be discussed out of PPT with the data showing what the child needs. And so, it, you know, I can't make a decision that, oh, yes, this child needs outplacement or this child doesn't. It really has to be discussed in the PPT, taking all the data that we have that supports that, yes, this child needs more than we can offer, or no, we can offer the child an appropriate education.
This is a group decision?
It's a PPT, yes. Group decision.
Does that have to be a NIPS decision, or is it like a majority? I guess, I guess it's more than one person right now, and it goes to parents as well.
You, usually the school team works in conjunction with the parent to look at the current data to make that decision. There may be discussion back and forth, and then we come to a finalized decision. There are some times we're all in agreement. Um, there are some times we're not. Um, there are...
If we're, yeah, if we're not in an agreement, um, what happens? The parent could recommend what they would want. And that's usually, but I'll say magnet schools, sometimes I see it could be the school team where I disagree with. But then we do what's called an actions refused. And so there could be a request from a parent that we feel is not appropriate. And so we will do an action refused, and that kicks in some of their rights that they have, um, to move forward, um, you know, to get those actions approved.
There's a lot of legal pieces. So with an IEP and the district presents their draft at a PPT and then finalizes the IEP, um, parents have a right to have that IEP for ten days before we implement any of the services we recommended at the meeting that John was talking about. Um, if they disagree, we could come back to PPT and further talk about it. Parents have a right to other ways to address their concerns if they disagree further after that, um, time period. We can implement the IEP.
And they can invoke their due process rights.
Is there, is there a regular review of the IEP, or is it?
Yes.
Yes, we have to have at least an annual review. So once a year, we have to have a review.
So that they could change whatever the recommendations were. They might change one way or another.
So I'll say this, that every PPT could change, but annually, we are looking at what needs to happen next. Um, so, um, at the least, the goals and objectives have to change. I mean, the child's making progress, and we have to change the goals and objectives. But we will look at, you know, what are the services that are provided and what the child will need at that time too. So that could also change.
And typically, we look for at least eighty percent mastery of goals and objectives within a year.
And that's what's called. We always want an IEP that has educational benefit. And so we want, you know, I guess a progression of IEPs to show that the child is progressing. With that, at least eighty percent achievement of goals and objectives, um, that they are making progress and that the program is appropriate for them.
So one other question. Um, this comes up in, in court issues a lot and in my field. And, um, I, I understand the Supreme Court raises this issue regularly with administrative regulations of various types. Are we allowed to factor cost into any of this? Or are we just, that's not?
Not, no, we're not. PPT does not talk about costs. It talks about what is appropriate for the child. So actually, in PPT, we cannot discuss money.
And sometimes, going back to like, you know, the programs we have in-house may drive some of our decisions going back to the outplacement. For example, our ABA classrooms, it's, um, really right now structured for our lower elementary students. If a student, um, receive, who's, has, usually has autism, requires that very discreet trial instruction as we go up in age, then we are then potentially looking out at outplacement, um, because of the programmings that we have in, in district. So one of the things John and I are looking at very closely is how can we develop more internal programs to meet our needs of our students?
I'm glad you mentioned that, 'cause that was my question, a segue from John's. Not so much the cost, which is, is very expensive, but I would love to keep our children here.
Correct.
You know, we talk about that. Um, are there thoughts, possibilities, plans to make us more, um, um, available for these children?
Um, I think it's something that we need to discuss. Um, some of the issues is space and at least the upfront costs. So space, um, our buildings are pretty tight right now, and so you need some space to develop these programs. Um, but it's definitely something that we're looking at, because, you know, you could build small programs that actually, one of the benefits of being in the school is then you could have a child within that program, and you could look at some transitional planning, so, you know, how to have that child maybe in a preferred activity, how to put the plan in place, you know, with staff that's used to that child to, uh, try to move them into a less restricted environment.
It would be a lot easier if we had the internal programs to bring students more into their general classrooms when they were ready. Sometimes when they're in an outplacement for an extended period of time, there unfortunately are some more barriers coming back into, um, the high expectations of a general education curriculum.
Any other questions? Matthew?
Has there been discussion about the space needs, like with the, this board, maybe through Mike, but, you know, anticipation as we top up facilities and new schools and that type of thing? Have you guys started that conversation, or?
Um, at least since I've been here, we've only talked about maybe the need to do that, but we haven't talked about the space, you know, specifically.
And the, and the cost discussion, on the board, we've had a lot of discussions related to private insurance. And are we able to bill, or have we billed, or could we bill out for the medical portion of, uh, a lot of the needs of some of these children?
So at the present time, we are not, but there are some services that can be billed through third-party payments. Um, that includes, uh, counseling, speech and language, and OT.
Um, if you're looking at what is the really big, if it's a really big return, I know I've talked to other colleagues in other districts who do do that. Um, some do it, and it's enough to kinda support some additional training that they've need to do for their, the teachers. I don't know if it would be enough to sustain a program, but we would have to investigate that further.
And we look at some of these larger outplacements of a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. And I mean, that's, that's even beyond one-to-one. I mean, you, you would have a person there. So it seems to in, it seems to encourage the fact that there might be more, uh, some medical aspects of some of that
Absolutely.
that are covered by pri- by, by private funds, which can be reimbursed to the, to us instead of, instead of us having to spend for that, because there's a reimbursement there. There's an insurance policy that covers this stuff. And we should tap into that. Is that generally accurate, or generally inaccurate? I'm asking you. You deal with this all the time.
Yeah, and I could say, I, you know, I've worked in towns where we have done third-party payments, and it has been, um, productive. Um, it all really depends of, you know, really the, um, students that you have in town, um, a lot of socioeconomic, uh, conditions that they're in of, you know, whether they have third-party payments that will support that. Um, so yes, definitely something that we have to, you know, look at. And I've had some, uh, um, you know, early discussions with Matt, um, in the sense of that too, because he also came from a town that used to build. Um, and so, um, with it though, you are looking at, then there's the, uh, you know, you have to have a person to, um, do the billing system, to, uh, you know, enter all that information.
There's an increase in responsibility for your staff that are providing the services and what they have to, um, collect and document as well.
Yep. Billable hours, and then they have other random samples that you have to fill out too. But it is something that we have to at least talk about.
Talk about big money here, though. Millions of dollars.
I think that's why I assume in-house programs, um, would be very beneficial.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You both.
Okay, so, um, on our agenda, we continue. We have our Board of Education meetings held, and John Cassio, facilities and maintenance?
You got it. Uh, in your packet, there were, uh, minutes to that meeting, um, but the agenda... I'll be right with you. I'm gonna get it on my phone. Okay, the agenda items that were discussed were capital improvements update, NASDAQ update, next steps on our school buildings, in quotes, renovations, current projects updates, new business and old business. So having said that, um, Mr. Bushy gave us, uh, I think, uh, an eye-opener of what we're going to receive as a Board of Ed for capital improvements for the school year twenty eighteen, twenty July, uh, twenty seventeen, rather, and that was ninety-five thousand dollars. And I think we were happy to receive that. The amount naturally could have been more, but I think in the, uh, what we're dealing with at this point, um, we'll take it. The other issue that we moved on, uh, what was, what would, uh, be in that ninety-five thousand dollars? And, uh, we're looking at the, um, carpet replacement at Emerson Williams School, as well as, uh, the, uh, pool equipment, uh, starting blocks and diving boards, uh, which will go forward in that regards. The NASDAQ study. Mr. Emmett met with South Windsor Superintendent and basically went over her plan, what moves the South Windsor District. And, um, our next step as a committee, we felt that the Superintendent, uh, can look into speaking with the consultant, uh, to move forward with our next steps in our schools' districts. So it's pretty spelled out in the minutes there. We also had, uh, I believe, a, a very lengthy discussion, uh, regarding the renovations of our, uh, elementary school buildings and the next step and plans to how to possibly go about doing that. And, um, did you all read the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, the minutes were on the website.
There you go.
They were in the Friday packet.
It was actually interesting.
And they were in the Friday packet. So the good news is that we have a, uh, real active committee. We have next steps with the Superintendent to review the NASDAQ study, to move steps forward, uh, for our school buildings. And we have some unanswered questions that we're still waiting for, for, uh, land use within Weathersfield.
Thank you, John. Thank you. That was a good meeting, too. WEC met on April tenth, and, um, WEC continues to work on many important initiatives for our youngest citizens. And WEC is the Weathersfield Education, uh, Early Childhood Collaborative. And this group, as you heard, is working with the Vernon Regional Adult-Based Education on a grant application for our ESL, ELL Family Learning Program. The UConn PEPP Program is in its sixth week, and all participants are enthusiastically working on their community project. And WEC is also excited to report that the website, their Virtual Family Resource Center, is up and available. Please check it out. Okay, then we have student program and services. Diane?
Yes, we met last week and talked about a number of items on... I can't pronounce it. Ingenuity?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity. Um, program that Mike Meltyz runs on the pilot has been completed. It's an online learning program that helps kids who are, um, short credits or, um, for credit attainment or credit recovery. So we're gonna be implementing that now, but the, um, pilot was successful. This year, they're hoping to expand it to PE and some tutoring services. And eleven students this year earned credit through this program. We talked about the WES advisory curriculum, Diane DeVivo, and, um, I forgot the other young woman's name that was there.
It used to be Whitney, but no, it's...
Sarah Coffey?
Sarah.
Sarah Coffey?
Thank you.
Um, talked about how the advisory curriculum was developed and how they're fine-tuning it, and some of the other things that they're, um, they're looking to do at the high school. They discuss, discuss the objectives, um, one being the interpersonal relationship between, um, the adults in the school and the students', um, study skills, curriculum enrichment, and college prep, and, um, developing a school culture. Basically, ninth graders, they're focusing on adjusting, getting the kids adjusted into the high school programs. Tenth, um, identifying ownership, responsibility, types of things. Eleventh grade, planning for the future, and then just when they've learned how to plan for the future, they're gonna transition... for the future, they're going to transition into the future with the 12th grade program. It's been pretty successful, and some of us have seen it or witnessed it. The last thing we talked about, which we spent a great deal of time on, was the ESL, English as a Second Language program. We had the two teachers for the district. It was amazing to me to see the high number of kids in our district that require this service, and we only have two teachers. So, and they use tutors, but that demand seems to be increasing and trending upwards. So, I think that that is something that we're going to have to look at in the coming years, especially based on, you know, their data and some of the data that was mentioned today for this grant. So, that I think is going to have to be in our radar as well.
Thank you, Diane. CREG Council had a meeting on April 19th, and CREG is the Capital Region Educational Council. Weathersfield is one of 35 towns that make up this council. And we heard from the CREG president and the board chair, their comments, of course, were on the budget and their work in providing services for the region. Peter Smith and Patrice McCarthy are the legal counsel for CREG and CAE, and we all wait for them, because they report on the work being done in the State General Assembly. Their reports are not optimistic and that a budget will be in the near future, and one, Peter Smith even predicted that a finished budget may come in September. All towns represented in the council have the same dilemma of working on a town budget with so many unknowns from the state. And moving on, we had Human Resources and Personnel Committee. Elaine?
We had a discussion of the employee handbook. The board members present felt that the handbook we have is a little too negative, and we want to rework it, and Trent Donahue is going to start working on that as soon as a labor issue problem is closed. Bobby brought with her the correct manual as a model that we might use to go from, so we're not reinventing the wheel. And then, we went into executive session for the discussion of the High Crest and Hamner principles.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. Our special Board of Ed meeting on April 25th, 2017, the Board of Ed had this special meeting for the purpose of a student issue. School Projects Building Committee. Michael?
We're still meeting.
That's a good sign.
At this point in time, we met on Monday. John Morris also attended, and again, the agendas are starting to decrease in their volume. However, there's still a lot to discuss. One of the things that happened over the course of April vacation, Mr. Maltese had reported a rather slow-running shower drain in one of the locker rooms. So, over the course of vacation, they actually went in and had to take up the floor to address this, and it was determined that the drain was piped out to a capped drain. So, we took new infrastructure and connected it to old, and this old, in fact, was capped. So, that has been repaired at this point in time. They just have to replace the tile that was taken up. In addition to that, we're starting to see change orders come back. I received last week a response from DAS concerning change orders three and four. Change orders three and four had ineligibleities to the tune of about $210,000. So, what we talked about last night was making sure that ONG, as well as Quisenberry and R. Carrier, are providing documentation as to why we believe that these charges should be reimbursed. The one, for example, had to do with the electricity going to the blockhouse. That had to be addressed, because we were doing grading, and that, the electrical lines were actually only eight inches below grade. They had to be addressed in order for us to be able to regrade that space to meet ADA requirements down at Katone Field. So, that'll be our argument for that one. Again, here we are in, you know, heading toward mid-2017, and we're dealing with change orders that actually date back to the beginning of the project. That was phase one with Katone Field. So, the state is way behind. And I just want to bring up the fact, John spoke about the Facilities and Maintenance Committee. I did, as my homework, have the opportunity to meet with two gentlemen from Colliers International that are helping to oversee the South Windsor project. Also, got the opportunity to meet with my colleague. They're doing a long-range, 10-year plan with regard to reducing the number of elementary schools they have in town and creating new ones. In meeting with these gentlemen last week, it was absolutely eye-opening with regard to how the state is operating at this point. I have asked them to come to the next Facilities and Maintenance meeting to meet with the whole group. I think it's going to be a very informational meeting, to say the least. In terms of where we're moving with the building committee, also, just to let you know, the screening was discussed last evening, so Rusty Malik provided kind of a schematic of what that looks like. That would be something we'd be looking at during the time period of summer. And then, also, with regard to the pool, there are baffles that need to be installed up at the ceiling level to reduce the noise. Those of you who've been in the pool during a meet, it's a little thunderous in there. So, that is, exactly. So, these baffles...
We didn't do that on purpose for home swim, home pool advantage?
No.
That sounds like an intentional...
No, no, unfortunately, no, it was not. So, the baffles are in, and what will happen, as soon as we're done with the spring programming on June 19th, the contractors can go in and address that. There were a couple of items that were brought forward with regard to the pool, in terms of where we're at, just to make sure the public is aware. The scoreboard is up on the wall, and it is functional. What is not yet up on the wall is the new record board. That came in in sections. It has been already populated with all the names. Mr. Bushy anticipates it's going to take five custodians and two lifts to get that thing lifted into place. That is going to happen after the school year is over. It's going to go on the opposite wall, so parents can look right across, across the pool and see the record board there. It is a big difference from what we currently have there now. In addition to that, Mr. Bushy, with regard to diving board and starting blocks, he has two consultants that are going to come in. Obviously, one of the things we're going to look at is hazardous material. We've got to take a look at testing if we're going into those blocks. The other issue we need to look at is the diving board. Mr. Moore has reached out to CIAC, looking at standards and looking at the depth of our pool. The depth of our pool is currently 10 feet. That is grandfathered from where it is now, which is currently 12 feet. So, we may have limitations with regard to the diving board in terms of whether or not we can replace that frame. So, those are the aspects of the pool. We expect that this work will be done over the course of the summer, and barring any unforeseen circumstances, and we know what happened last summer, we expect that that pool will be open, ready for use, both programmatically for our students, as well as for the girl swim team.
Okay, thank you. We have meetings scheduled. We have a special Board of Education meeting this Thursday, everyone. It's our retreat at 6:00. Community and PR Committee on May 2nd at 5:30 at the high school. Policy and Planning Committee, May 3rd at 5:30. Memorial Day Parade Committee, May 3rd at 7:00. WEC, Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, on May 8th at 4:30 in the library. And Finance and Information Management Committee on May 9th at 6:00. Okay. Is there any unfinished business? Anyone? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. Okay, so are there any board comments? Go ahead, John.
Mike, when you can reach out to those two gentlemen that want to come to Facilities and Maintenance?
Yes.
Can you let us know so that we can, before we get into the spring and other meetings, we can get that meeting accomplished?
Sure. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Diane?
I just want to have a shout-out, if you will, to Mr. Nick and Mr. Rhodes at the high school, who took, they had come before us, taking a class of kids during spring break to London and Paris. And the kids had a wonderful time. It was a wonderful opportunity. They got to see a lot of great stuff. And it happened two weeks after the incident in London. And funny story, Mr. Emmett and I were on the same plane on the way to Fort Myers that morning, on Saturday morning, and he and his wife were sitting directly across from my husband and I. And as soon as the plane landed, I got a text from my daughter that said, "A lot of ambulances, fire trucks, police, and helicopters in the air." And I said, "Oh, good. I just told Mr. Emmett that." And she was like, "What is, what's he doing there?" And so, they, they got a, I guess she told Mr. Nick that you were informed about it, but then she texted back before we got off the plane, "Don't worry, we're okay."
Oh, good.
But, it was a great trip. It was a really educational, it was a whirlwind, but the kids got a lot out of it, enjoyed themselves.
Very good, thanks. Anyone else for comment? Matthew?
Thanks. John, I just wanted to thank you for keeping going on the facilities projects and keeping that train going. It's going to take a long time, obviously, in total, so the faster and more efficiently we work now will save us in the future. So, as you look toward that, of course, you know, please keep pre-K 3, pre-K 4 on the top of the list as far as the total space needs, and it sounds like today, we even talked about possibly in-housing and moving in-house, and there's going to be some space needs there for maybe special education, which hopefully will greatly reduce our outsourcing costs. That may even be a budgetary play, where we can find savings in one to help pay for the other. So, but that's something that your committee is obviously going to have to sort of work with. Also, there was a kind of a little working group meeting that we have for pre-K 3, pre-K 4 with the superintendent, and I just wanted to remind Mike that I think that we're scheduled to meet in the next couple of weeks. I don't know if we find a firm date in order to, to find out some of the options as far as how to bring a program to Weathersfield, pay for a program in Weathersfield, and lots of those kinds of programmatic items. So, we're working on that sort of behind the scenes, so that as John puts the building together, we can fill it with some great stuff. And also, just as far as the public comment goes, I don't think I'm going to be alone on this diet for this one, but 25, 26 number, I understand we didn't start with that number, but as we end with that number, that's a... Yeah. Do we start with 25, 25? Do we start with those 25, 25?
No.
Or is it lower than that?
It was lower than that.
Either way, we're, I think, this board has pretty consistently said that's kind of a, it's not really a palatable number. And I think that hopefully, we could have a contingency plan. I think that they, I think, I thank the people that came up now, right? I mean, look how proactive that is. That's fantastic. And that, you know, that as a board, we are monitoring over the summer, that one of the major things that we do over the summer is figure out that we're prepared for September. So, I hope you stay on top of that and that
We will.
whether it's consolidation or move over, that at least from this seat, it's pretty important, and I think the parents bring up a good point.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to just spend a few minutes on this community forum on opioid and heroin addiction that was in Weathersfield at the high school on April 10th, and this was hosted by our representatives, Russ Moore and Tony Guera. But John Morris' wife, Laura, was the organizer who put together this very important, informative evening. The panel was a distinguished group of individuals who are seeing firsthand the magnitude of this issue. A few important items to take away from the evening. Number one, the best way to prevent prescription drug abuse is to learn about this issue, which we did. Recognizing, number two, recognizing the signs of prescription drug abuse. And third, and we've talked about this, resources for people in crisis, both walk-ins and online. And soon after that, John Morris and I sat down with Michael Emmett about how the school system can best work on this serious issue. And Mr. Emmett has also called together Social Services and Park and Rec to work as a combined effort in planning for prevention and support. The school system will be involved through teachers and programs for our students, and we plan to work proactively to help our families and our students. Also, I'd like to send out a cheer for SBACK testing, which will be starting soon in grades three through eight. From all the board, to all the administrators, teachers, and students who are involved, we know our system is a top-performing place in sports, music, and theater. It's always plain to see, but now, we are looking to show off our scholarly skills. So, like a cheering section or an admiring audience, we are behind the students 100%. And also, good luck to the DECA kids who went off to California today. We wish them the safest of journeys and the best of results. We all set? Then we need to hear from Jack. Any comments on life at the high school?
Yeah, so, as for the seniors, it's just now's the time where everyone's deciding on where they're going to go to college, and it's great to see the wall in the guidance office fill up with the post-its of where everyone's going. Pretty, some, you know, schools around the country, or if, you know, people are going into the military or work, or just, it's nice to see what everyone's doing after, after their run at Weathersfield Public Schools. Also, another thing that people are excited for are the junior and senior prom, always something people are excited for every year, and it's good to see that that will be another event that people will look forward to. And also, you know, just with the presentations today, I did really enjoy the presentations about Look for the Good, as well as the Jets, you know, just great things that staff and students in our town are doing.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, may I have a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of interviewing a candidate for principal of the Hamner Elementary School and discussion and possible action on the appointment for this position?
So, move.
Okay, it's the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any abstentions?
No. I'm voting nay.
Nay?
No.
Okay. Okay. Did you get that, Ellie?
Yes.
So, that concludes the public part of our board meeting. Thank you all for coming and for watching, and good night.